Favorite country song, or some otherwise embarrassed on this please put it on stun. And then if you feel the need to have a secondary, we got a pretty good crowd tonight. It's not too cold out in January. Step outside or back room, please try very hard not to disrupt the meeting. So with that, I see that we have oath of office on here. I know, I've already taken the oath of office there recently, but I think there's a couple other individuals that need to be sworn in and re sworn in, or as we like refer to it, sworn at. So Joe, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, with those council members who were elected last election, Robinson, Mr. Lupton, Mr. Cusman. I do swear that I will well truly give myself that I will well truly give myself as council member of the city of Shamley as council member of the city of Shamley during my term of office during my term of office and that I am not the holder of that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money any unaccounted for public money do the state of Georgia do the state of Georgia any political subdivision or authority thereof or any political subdivision or authority thereof that I am not the holder of any office and trust that I am not the holder of any office and trust under the government of the United States under the government of the United States any other state or any foreign state any other state or any foreign state which I may by the law of the state of Georgia which I may by the law of the state of Georgia be prohibited from holding be prohibited from holding that I am otherwise qualified that I am otherwise qualified to hold the office to which I have been elected to hold the office to which I have been elected according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia that I will support the Constitution of the United States that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Georgia and of the state of Georgia that I am a resident of this district from which I was elected that I am a resident of this district from which I was elected and that I will faithfully enforce the charter that I will faithfully enforce the charter and ordinance the city of Shamley and ordinance the city of Shamley to the best of my skill and ability to the best of my skill and ability without fear or favor without fear or favor congratulations.
All right, Karen here, Karen, it's good, good, welcome to have you on the team. So just want to let you know that your belly of the bar has nothing saved for the light. So you should be all right. All right, yeah, I was talking about myself. I did, I was talking about myself. Okay, here we go. First, I am among the agenda, we'll have some public hearings here this evening. So with that, I will read the order, read the rules of order. Because I don't have them memorized exactly yet. The rules of order for public hearing zoning matters, which is City Code Section 280-2. The hearing shall be presided over by the mayor. After calling the hearing to order, the mayor shall request the parcel of property which is the subject of the zoning proposal be identified and read. Following such identification and reading, the development director's recommendation shall be presented. The mayor and city council shall cause the director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all ten minutes are not used, the proponents remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall then be allowed a total of ten minutes for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced, but may be extended by majority vote, provided they are expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give their name and address to the city clerk. Do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. So with that, we'll call it to order. First item I see here is PC 2019-560 and 567, which is 4011 and 4147 Shamley Dunwoody Road rezoning in DCI for Brighton Park Townhomes.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is a request for a rezoning from NR1 and NR2 to NR3, along with the development community impact and six concurrent variances. The sites are located at 4011 and 4147 Shamley Dunwoody Road. It's about 11.4 acres of parcel. And in this case, the applicant is requesting to construct a single-family attached residential townhome development. There are six variances requested. The first two are related to the internal private streets and the applicant's desire to not provide the five-foot landscape strip, which would require that it fit the street trees and lights on the backside of the sidewalk. Those are the first two variances. There's also variances to not provide the required five-foot-by-six-foot front porch on all townhome units, to not provide the 200 square feet of private outdoor space on each individual townhome lot, to reduce the minimum lot size down to a minimum, a variance of a minimum of 200 square feet, and to allow retaining walls at the back and rear of the side of the property up to 22 feet tall. This case was originally scheduled for December, that was referred to the applicant's request to this meeting. In total, there are 70 townhome units, 43 of which are rear-loaded townhomes, 27 are front-loaded. There are 14 townhomes that front directly on the Shamley Dunwoody Road. Those are planned rear-loaded townhomes and constructed in a two-three split style. So from the street, they appear to be two-story townhomes. The applicant is proposing to construct the streets here on Shamley Dunwoody Road. And if you recall, as part of the multi-ball transportation plan, there was a 12-foot long trails plan for Shamley Dunwoody Road. It's called the Shamley Dunwoody Site Plan. They are proposing to construct that trail along Shamley Dunwoody Road. You may also recall the Huntley Hills Trail, which runs behind this property along the tributary of Nancy Creek. This, they have proposed to provide just the 20 footings and don't construct the trail. In 2015, the portion of site was rezoned from NR1 to NR2 for 27 single-family lots. That portion of the rezonation is shown on the map in the yellow area. That's the NR2 zone property, previously the Presbyterian Presbyterian Church. They've since acquired or are planning to acquire a portion of the United Methodist Church property, which has been added to this development proposal. That's the NR1 zone parcel. Here's the site plan, you can see the site plan, a plastic trail planned on Shamley Dunwoody Road. And in the back is a stream with a steep slope, sees where the larger walls are located. It's also a stream buffer area and where the Huntley Hills Trail would travel from the north into the south. They have submitted elevations of the rear-loaded and front-loaded townhome units, so they're in your packet, along with some examples of what the open space areas might look like, some of the finishes, the interior common areas, amenities for the neighborhood, and then some perspectives from Shamley Dunwoody Road showing the path. They propose a seating area there that would be publicly accessible to users of the trail in front of our project. And initially showed an entrance, what that might look like, once it's constructed. Here's an existing site though, showing the front of the property. This is the stream on Shamley United Methodist Church as it enters into the proposed development. Staff has received approval for rezoning of DCI and several variances requests. We do recommend denial of the variance to eliminate the eight-foot-by-six-foot front porch on some of the townhome units. Several conditions of approval are recommended. This did not trigger the requirements of the traffic impact study, although the city engineer did review it as part of the DCI requirements. We do recommend a left turn lane of Shamley Dunwoody Road into the property. We also, in lieu of providing an easement, we are recommending that either the Huntley Hills Trail be constructed or they provide a fee of lieu to construct that trail in the future. The end. There's also condition number five, if you've recommended some pedestrian access to go to the front of the property so those units can get to the sidewalk without having to go through the internal streets. DRB did review this request, they had two recommended conditions. The first, condition seven, is related to access to the Huntley Hills Trail in the future, and some recommended access points. And then they had a recommendation that the basades along Shamley Dunwoody Road, including the sides, all brick. That's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Did you have anything to add? Pretty good. We'll have 10 minutes. For those wishing to speak in favor, please come up to the microphone, write your own name, address. To the city clerk, to the city clerk.
We have that, we have that as a slide, work slide, where I'll be able to do all of it.
You good?
Kenneth Wood, 353 Research Court, East Street Corners, Georgia. So an exciting talk today. As staff said, it's 11.3 acres today. And so we kind of backtrack a little bit and give some clarification. So originally, the property was a reduction in the amount of acreage that's there. On the south side, there was a property zone, so NR2 classification. And then since then, it actually has been purchased, from the Methodist Church there on the northern side, giving the total acreage to 11.393, and that's the NR2. And then that was the N R line that existed, that is there today. So I created a slide, it's to show you the area several years ago. It's in the Morrison piece, down the street, just a little bit to the south, and just recently in Brookhaven. There's a cluster cottage feel on the median city residential that's just there. And then up the street across right from us, you have the condos that exist today, and then multiple of townhome units. And so Shamley Dunwoody, the way it's developed, there's multiple kind of alcoves where you have higher-end townhome developments that are gated, or you have little condo developments, or different type of cluster developments as you go up through there, and when you're looking at that. Our property sits right, as we started creating the development, one thing that became very clear is the site had a lot of challenges. It had a lot of topography that dropped off from the end, on each side going down to the river. And that was one of the things that really became a problem as we started looking at the original zoning, which was a single-family development, and just how big the lots were, and how much they hung off into the creek buffer, and the size of the walls directly behind the homes, and the usability of that. This is the survey of the property, so you can see on the eastern side, and see if you go north, what the slopes look like. It's a great piece of property, and as you walk it, as you get closer to the streams, that's where the challenges come in. And so as we're looking at the property, deciding what it really wants to be, the attached, for sale, or higher-end townhome, what's invested for the property in a wide group, how we determine that. So looking at the site, this was the site plan submitted. Now, this was the second submitted, originally we submitted a site plan, and we pulled that back after we got some really good comments from DRB. It caused us to rethink the way we did the layout. And so we ended up pulling about 90 feet to the west on the whole property. And what that did is that eliminated every retaining wall, higher eastern portion that backs up to the Hills neighborhood that's over there. And so this is the new layout that you have. As was mentioned, the homes are all front Shamley Dunwoody Road, they're all two stories, so it's a two-three split. And so if you're walking along, we have a 10-foot landscape strip, a 12-foot trail right along there. We have our dog parks and our seating areas. And if you're walking right along those townhomes, there'll be a private gate, and then you'll see the two-story elevations, which are all brick. We are proposing to gate it because of the higher-end aspect and where it is. The entrance, if you kind of give yourself a location, so that the lineup of Winchester Drive directly across the street from that. And as you come into the property, you come in right into one of the amenity areas, which is a big flat park that I'll show you guys in the next few slides. We also submitted a grading plan. This shows you where we're able to eliminate all that grading on that eastern side. And what that did is that enabled us to actually save all those trees on that eastern side, like all the way down to the trail. On the northern side, what we are proposing, actually one of the conditions is talking about a staggered wall. But what we were looking at, so that we don't go any further toward the buffer, was actually an earthen wall so that we can construct it right along the edge where we're showing it on the grading plan, and then be able to spray it so that it will actually grow vegetation and become part of the ecosystem as you see it along there. As you're walking along the trail, we thought that would be more fitting as a system to the environment that way. The Cav County has gone through our side and actually done a sewer rehabilitation, where they upgraded from about a 12-inch to, I think, a 22-inch to 24-inch pipe. And so there has been clearing, if you're down there, that clearing is not us, that clearing was actually the county in the way they were doing that. Originally, we had a couple of variances on the sidewalk system. We took those out, we have sidewalks on both sides throughout the entire development. We did add them going out to the road. I think on the staff before, they mentioned having that connection, but that connection is shown now out directly to the road. The only variances to us, on all the townhome developments that I've done, it just seems to work out better to be able to put the sidewalks on the back of the curb and be able to have room for the trees and the lights. From an HOA is looking out 10 to 15 to 20 years down the road, as those trees grow and get bigger, you know, the Comcast, AT&T, the Georgia Power, all the different fiber and everything else that's going to be run right behind the curb and under that sidewalk, and being able to have it at that location to keep from future HOA issues. Going further, we have a landscape plan, and we've actually met with the neighbors in the south, as well as neighbors to the west, to show them this. And this is the rendering of the property, it shows you, we gave a buffer on the south side, and have negotiated how that works out heavily there. And then also a ton of planning along the street side, as required. And then on the northern side, we're planning any place that was sparse where that vegetation did not exist. This is a picture of the amenity area, as we said, when you drive in to the community, we want to have that as a staple area for our development. So this is your sitting area, this is your fire pit, gazebo. So it will be a passive amenity area where you can come off and actually come from your units right out to there. All those units would face that. Something that is a little bit different on this one is we're proposing a fairly, really nice higher-end dog park. We've done several of these, we just finished one in Sandy Springs on Russell Road. If you can go up there, it's near the Zaxby, it has rock formations that was done really well. And so this is kind of a glimpse of what that can look like. And it's pretty large in size, and it would sit right at the corner of the property for the residents to be able to use. So this is what we submitted as part of the revision, as far as the buffer plan. And then within the last day, and so I know you guys are asking, the staff is not seeing the next slide. I'm going to show you guys, but I want to understand the reason why. So we literally just finished it after meeting with the Jolly Family to the south. So this is that plan. The only difference in the plan is that we had some deciduous trees with the evergreens, and we changed that for their request to be all evergreens, and to add a five-foot fence on the property line on this south side. So that is the only change, and what that was. And then we did these sightline studies so that you can understand from the neighbor that most of the townhome would not be visible through that buffer, through that fence, and then also with the grade change. So those are a couple of unique slides that we came in and presented. This is the fencing, everything's going to be black, basically like an illuminant, looks like wrought iron. The walls we talked about being the earthen-type walls, as we went over. So from the staff recommendations, the one variance that was not approved, just for clarification on this, it's not that we don't want the front porches. Almost every other unit has the front porches. We were just trying to make it so that every one didn't have it, so that we could have a variation in our elevations. It's like this, this is kind of a good example, so that you see that you have the front porch, and then the next one has more of a stoop and then a front porch. And so that was how we wanted to, was our request, and we thought it would look a little bit better to be able to evolve that a little bit. We did the perspectives that staff showed you guys, and how it would feel coming off the road. And then this was another slide that I wanted to create for you guys, just so you understand what we're talking about doing. So we have the 12-foot trail, concrete trail on the whole front, that is being proposed, that we would construct. And then we're proposing the 20-foot easement. But in addition to that, what we've talked about doing is to go ahead and build, and I kind of highlight it's like Star Wars up there, sorry about that, but it's an eight-foot crusher run. So if you go down to the, along the Chattahoochee, where they have those walking trails, it would be an eight-foot crusher run trail that we would install all the way down and have a circle at the end. And then it's real faint, but we would also grant an easement across the entire back portion of the property because after meeting with staff and a couple of the representatives, it seemed like it's unknown where that trail's going to go leaving our property. It could go south, it could go straight, it could go cul-de-sac, it could go in the future up toward the west. And so we've granted an easement across the whole back side. Then that way, you guys have total freedom in the future to do that. These were the variations that were listed, as we said, even with that one, we just would request we're able to not have the front porches on all of them. And then this is one of the other reasons, beside the property being best suited for the attached housing with the grading and everything. This is the land use map that was passed not very long ago as we started this process, it's median density residential. That's six to 19 units per acre, and we're at 6.19.
Great, thank you. That's 10 minutes. Appreciate it. Okay, we will have 10 minutes for those wishing to speak in opposition. Please come up to the microphone, tell us who you are, give the city clerk your name and address. Anyone?
My name is Hannah Honey, I live at 3678 Spring Street. This development is going to cause a major problem on Shamadilly. It's already difficult to drive on Shamadilly because of the increased housing there. It's an example of spot zoning, which seems to be happening more often than not. I think it should remain NR1 and NR2, and I think that some of the trees should remain, evergreens. That's just another way of saying, you know, we're going to plant these little trees that, we're going to see a bunch of houses. It's going to be much more difficult for us to be able to get up and down Shamadilly. I drive it every single day. I'd really appreciate it if we considered having less housing here. We've got plenty on East Street Industrial, we've got it covered, East Street Park. We've got it covered already. We don't need more high-density housing in this area. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Carson Powell, 3686 Gisele Drive. I'd like to present a case against the rezoning of variances of 4011, 4147, Shamley Dunwoody. Contextually, NR3 zoning that's being requested is not aligned with any of the properties surrounding the subject property, and does not seem to be compatible with companies of master plan stating single-family homes with large lots. I believe that was in the application. You have a 30-acre church that's largely undeveloped due flood plain to the north. You have a two-acre single-family home that hugs the south. On the backside, you have Huntley Hills subdivision. None of these will be developed anytime soon. I mean, we're talking decades here. The application also presents a false narrative. The developer was aware of all site conditions upon purchase of both properties. Nothing's changed, or presents a hardship to the developers currently zoned NR1 and NR2. This development would have significant negative impacts to the community from a traffic perspective, which is awful in that area. Infrastructure, specifically stormwater, and sewer, and school attendance. We know that we're facing issues regarding that as well. This will have a large impact to Nancy Creek Tributary, as a large portion of forested and permeable ground will become part of a runoff. The application also states the current site is an ISO. I'd say project's approval is not necessary for the owner to take measures to beautify the property. If the owner acknowledges the property is not being maintained, is an ISO, perhaps they can encourage to do something about it. Further, I think the variances requested are an overreach, going from 1600 to 1200 square feet. That's a reduction by 25% for an already enhanced NR3 zoning. And retaining walls close to 22 feet. It's a very large retaining wall that I know that this council has talked about before, Shamley doesn't want to see. In closing, I strongly recommend and encourage the council to deny the requested rezoning to NR3. Additionally, I believe this site should be developed as the owner chooses. That is their right. I have no problems with that personally. However, I believe they should work within the confines of the existing zoning ordinances and their variances that are provided, and the specific relief for smaller lot size and the large retaining walls should not be given. Lastly, I'm worried that allowing development largely out of scale with the neighboring community will set a precedent and open the door for other incompatible developments in the future. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here.
My name is Ken Belkley, I live at 3995 Commodore Drive in Shamley. And the cul-de-sac where this developer developed six single-family homes, about 30 acres of lots. I believe that that's the precedent that's set for this property. The project should now be approved as townhomes of all variances, especially the density of units and lot size from 1600 square feet to 1200 square feet. The model of the project should be the cul-de-sac on Commodore Drive. The 28, which was earlier said 27 single-family homes, is the appropriate use of that property. The precedent is also set by all the Brookhaven properties across the road where they're single-family homes. The other church on the same Shamley Dunwoody Road, see? The other church on the same Chambly Dunwoody Road, see, was zoned as twenty-eight single-family homes by Brookhaven, which is almost an identical type of property, a church conversion. On Brook's, a brand-new single-family detached home was built just across the street, approximately seventeen hundred thousand dollars in value. Only townhome properties approved by Chambly, which this board sets the precedent, are next to commercial or industrial properties. So you'd be setting the new precedent by approving this property from my perspective. The proposal is inconsistent with the developer's connected property. Here, the developer constructed single-family homes that are worth seven hundred thousand plus in the neighborhood, all thirty-four hundred square feet range. Huntley Hills has a single-family neighborhood association where the average single-family home is a value of four hundred and eighteen thousand. This has increased in value from two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars over the last five years. As an example, townhomes, from where I come from in Miami, townhomes and condominiums have a negative long-term effect on the value of properties. Single-family homes have less crime. Single-family homes have a better opportunity of property growth of values. The suitability of the subject property, based on Brookhaven and Chambly's approval of other projects along Chambly Dunwoody Road, should be single-family homes. The proposal articulates that there will be tree buffer, but the trees were removed by upgrading the sewer line on the back of the proposed property. Traffic studies have not been addressed currently during morning and afternoon rush hours. Traffic will be backed up from two eighty-five or Peachtree Road as far as the church parking lot. Traffic lights should be installed at the entrance of the property if it is approved so it can control the outgoing cars and the incoming cars for left turn purposes. I don't think the left turn lanes are linked to the property proposed. And then lastly, habitat of wildlife has not been addressed. I live on the cul-de-sac there. I've had coyotes come up in my backyard, ten feet from my door. I've had deer, I've had rabbits, I've had numerous types of birds. Taking out many of the trees for the townhome property would reduce the level of the habitat that's currently in the environment. There's no studies that have been completed to determine the impact of habitat. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you for your time and thank you for this being an example to United States Constitution Act to where we get petitions out there and we get to present our views and then you guys hopefully come to a wise word. Thank you for your service and thank you for your historical South management in Chambly Dunwoody. Have a good day.
Thank you. About three minutes left.
My name is Jason Tamer. I live at three nine nine four Commodore Drive, next to the next completely exposed. Our cul-de-sac community is in the upper right of this slide here. Essentially, this project is our backyard. Not literally, obviously not our property, but this is going to be our view from our backyard for how long this project makes, and obviously once it's completed. One thing the developer mentioned a morning to point out, because we've got this breeze passed, is the sewer project in county. They have come in and basically clear-cut the areas that are designated on this drawing as tree protecting areas. There are no trees there. These were drawings that were submitted, I think the first version was submitted in maybe twenty fifteen. The sewer project was done in the spring of twenty nineteen. And so since these drawings have been done, there are no trees on the eastern side. One of the things that was mentioned was during the opening presentation was that everything of it moved back on that eastern edge to preserve the trees on the eastern side. There are no trees. Everything's been clear-cut all the way down to the tree on the sewer project. So if the trees are taken out, they're made for those things to take out for this project, there will be no trees in this property. And I do understand that they can come in and landscape, plant new trees. One of the things that I noticed in the comprehensive plan update that was adopted just last month, there were several places where the concept of preserving mature tree canopy was mentioned. This is all mature tree canopy, this entire project, and that will be the end. So we'll have new plant landscape, we'll have England cypress, some of those, evergreens to try and cover up the look of it, but the mature tree canopy is going to be quite well. I find it remarkable that there's, that this did not trigger requirements for a traffic study. The south end and the north end of Chambly Dunwoody are both designated as available D. Traffic in the comprehensive plan update, which is bad. And to put this right, you might leave those two sections are already problem traffic areas without doing any kind of traffic study, it's a remarkable. I also would ask that the body to consider whether or not there's any kind of performance fund. I don't know how that would work in this scenario, but I would hate to see a project like this start or not finish. We don't know what the economy is going to be like in a year or two years, whenever this is going to be completed. And so I hope that you folks have some sort of assurance or some sort of financial mechanism in place to ensure that this project was completed or started. Thank you.
Thank you. And that takes us to just that ten minutes. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is PZ two oh two oh dash five seven nine, which five eight oh and five, whoops, five seven nine and five eight oh, which is five four five zero Peachtree Boulevard rezoning or Chick-fil-A. I believe they sent us a letter asking for referral. What do we have there?
That's correct.
For?
They asked for two months.
Asked for two months. So without objection, council, we move to, move that to the work session in March. Right, I get that right? Two months, March? Yeah. I get a gold star. All right, next item then. PZ two oh two oh dash five eight two, which is thirty fifty-one, thirty sixty-three, thirty seventy-one, thirty eighty-one, Claremont Road DCI, which is Hilton Garden Inn.
Yes, Mayor Council, this is a request for a DCI. This is a major modification of a currently, or previously approved DCI, along with seven variances and six waivers. Various addresses at Claremont Road near the Century Center office complex. The property is zoned Big Shoes Business Center. It is about two point seven acres. Here, the applicant is wishing to construct a hotel with a hundred and forty-one rooms, restaurant and meeting space. The variances include a reduction in the amount of open space, variances to the retaining wall heights, to not have the building adjacent to the supplemental zone, to reduce the required ten-foot sidewalk in portions of the front of the property. They've asked to reduce the required parking from one eighty-seven to one forty-one, and then to provide the street trees and pedestrian lights on the backside of the sidewalk. The waivers are mostly related to landscaping. The first few are for the parking lot landscaping requirements. They are requesting to reduce the tree density from a hundred inches DTH breaker to eighty-three, to not have the sidewalk at the same rate when it crosses the driveway, and to not provide any parking access to all of the adjoining blocks. As I mentioned, this was previously approved as a DCI in twenty nineteen. That application was for approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand square foot hotel. It was five stories, a hundred and fifty-six rooms, about four thousand square feet of restaurant, four thousand square feet of meeting space. This request reduces the overall square footage to one of six, goes up a story to six stories, reduces the room count by fifteen to one forty-one, keeps the restaurant spaces approximately the same, and the meeting space increased by about four hundred square feet. The applicant is proposing to clear the entire site, height the stream. They did receive stream, received stream upper variances for that at the previous request. The applicant's reason for coming back to you is because he knows it's requiring a deceleration lane on Claremont, which is impacting the amount of area they have to work with on the site. So they will be getting rid of all the curpets and having one curpet if approved on Claremont Road. Here's the site location again, it's four existing parcels near Century Place and Claremont Road. Here's the site plan. See, it's a surface parking lot with the building located on the southwest corner of the lot. Just to give you some perspective for the elevations, this is the south elevation, so this is what you would see if you're heading north on Claremont Road, the side of the building. The bottom, this is the west elevation, that's going to be the front elevation along Claremont. The north elevation, that's going to be what you'll see if you're heading south on Claremont Road towards the interstate with fifty-five. This is what the hotel would look like from the back. Some perspective renderings that the applicant submitted. So this is looking at the property and coming on Claremont Road. You can see Claremont Road and then Century Place is the private driveway up to the northeast side. And that's so that outline you read, that would be the front side. Just to show you the differences, so this is the current proposal. This was a previous proposal. So it shifted from the north side of the property to the south side of the property, which was that, the other big change is that this plan included a two-story structured marking deck, if you recall. Because of the limitation in the side area, they said that's not feasible anymore, so that's why it's a surface parking lot. The parking space, the unit number is exactly the same. They had one space per unit last time, they have one space per unit this time. You can see in the previous drawing, they did have the patio and restaurant there on the corner. In this one, they have the same thing. It's actually, the previous, there would, you had to kind of step down to get to the patio. This one, it appears that it's going to be at grade with Claremont because of that shift to the other end of the site. Here's some other elevation, so looking from the back of the site, from the private drive. This is looking from the back of the property, so then you can see Claremont in the distance. This is looking north, so there you see, this is the facade you would see coming north on Claremont Road. They did submit some wall, I know walls, we talked about that a lot last time, so this demonstrates how the changes, how those walls would be impacted. This is the wall at the back of the site. This is the wall looking from Century Place. So that's the parking lot. You can see with these pictured on the right that the parking lot will be lower than Claremont. So you'll terrace up walls to Claremont Road. And here's some site photos showing the existing conditions. Staff does recommend approval of the DCI and several of the variances. We do recommend denial of the open space variance, that's because they can meet it through alternative methods like the previous pegging. We do recommend that they provide that ten-foot sidewalk along the entire frontage, that they meet the landscaping requirements for the types of mounted trees and landscape areas. They need the tree density requirement because again, there's alternate methods to meet that requirement, that they provide the sidewalk at the grade across the driveway, and that they provide all interparcell access. There are some conditions of approval. Some of these are carryovers from last time. Four is important, we want them to, instead of narrowing down that sidewalk, to work with Marda to relocate the bus shelters so they can widen out the sidewalk to ten feet all the way to the north. Then there's some retaining wall conditions. Condition seven is one of your consideration to have the stoner brick go to the top of the fifth floor. That's to make sure the front facade is majority brick and stone and not stucco. And then the DRB had several conditions, those are underlined in bold, mostly related to the retaining walls and how those are treated. They had concerns with that elevation when you're coming north on Claremont and that kind of they exposed the brick part of the building, so they wanted more finistration there. And then they had a condition about additional access to the underground retention pond and then contrasting materials in the driveway for pedestrians. And that's all I have.
Cool. John, do you have anything to add? You said stone or brick. I thought you said stoner brick. I thought that was a pretty wild brick, man. All right, very cool. All those wishing to speak in favor, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address to the city clerk. Tell us how you may or may not be related to the project.
My name is James. I'm two twenty-one, Roswell Street, Alpharetta. I'm representing the developer. I'm a civil engineer on the project. For context, just I know that you did a great job explaining it, so I actually made my job a little easier because I was actually going to do a lot of the same thing you just went through, but I presented the original site plan as well, so I'd like to show that. This is the current, the new site plan right now. The previous site plan, just more from a standpoint of just being able to look at it, shows the building to the left and the driveway is closer to the southern property line. Georgia DOT denied that driveway, which is why it is shifted. Notice that we shifted to where DOT wants it, would be more towards the middle of the site, which cuts off the other building location and made that frontage on that location too small, so, which is why we ended up switching it to the other side to get more frontage along Claremont Road. So that was kind of the main reason. The other thing that happened is that we shifted to the other side. On the left-hand side of Claremont, it's high. Basically, if you go to the right, like the plan you're seeing, it's about nine foot three difference on Claremont. So by shifting the building to the other side, it's a right side plan. We're about nine feet lower than the original, which changed the dynamics of how we do the wall, how it was done with parking decks and everything like that. It also obviously required us to be one story higher, reduce the number of rooms. We still tried to try to eat restaurant space the same, same as important to have multiple uses. We also made sure there's no rooms on the first floor, so it's all meeting space, it's restaurant, it is basically check-in services and things like that. It's not, it's a little bit more accessible. We're making sure that there's a supplemental zone, that the patio, the restaurants on the lower right-hand corner, you can see right there. So we're still trying to maintain that, the perspectives that were shown. It shows that the angle shows that the high foundation wall to the right. At the design review board, we definitely talked a lot about trying to make that wall, if you can show the perspective, that shows the walls on the southern side.
Did voice caps mess it up again?
Yeah, that was good. That was, yeah, that's fine. Right there, as you can see, the wall, where the windows are on the southern side over there, that is actually your first floor. Everything below that is a foundation wall. At the design review board, they recommended the extra finistration to kind of make it look a little bit more. The developers signed with that. There's no problem trying to make that look a little bit more. The retaining wall that's in the back, it's kind of in the beige color. Developers also okay with making sure that ties in, looks a lot more like the structure, put additional finistration on that. I just want to make sure that we understood. In fact, all the designer board recommendations were okay with. There was a couple of things on the variances that I wanted to talk about. One was the open space. Last time we requested an open space variance and that it was approved. Obviously, I know that this is very conducive though because it's a major modification. We would be, because of where we're placing this building and everything, we are definitely improving access along Claremont Road. We're providing definitely much more open space along Claremont. The other open space is actually in the courtyard in the else shape of it. I don't know if you can, see if there's any of the... Okay, you can put there. You can see the additional open space is up by the, you know, the main entry in there. So the rest of the, the place to get the open space would actually, would be behind the walls. There's no, then that's not technically open space. So that's why we're asking for the variance for open space on that one. As far as the supplemental zone adjacent to the building facade, just mainly because Claremont Road is kind of more in a diagonal. We're keeping our building straight. We've actually kept it straight like that to provide additional open space right there on the left-hand side of the building. Right there, so we're trying to get more open space in the front. So if we actually hugged the supplemental zone, it would actually reduce the amount of open space in the front there. As far as parking spaces and all that, I think that the developer explained that, the hundred and forty-one rooms, and required at least twenty space per room. We're asking for that variance to be reduced. We had, the variance wasn't approved last time as well, to reduce it down to one per room. And then as far as the waivers, I agree with all the staff recommendations, all the waivers. The only one that, the only one that I want to talk about is the interparcell access. Technically, we're supposed to provide interparcell access to all the sides. We can provide interparcell access in the upper left-hand corner of the site, which would be the northeast corners. We can provide it to the other side for future developments. If they come in and, to grade work, everything works with the same access. The site that we can access, interparcell would be to the south, which would be to the right of that. And that's where the, currently, there's just the office kind of, office park right there. They have the twenty wall for purpose right there. But if we provide the access to the other two corners, those get the develop, they actually would be able to get through over to Century Boulevard and then work your way around. So that would actually provide the same interparcell access. So we're asking for the variance on that or later for that, just because of the rating tag, but we can provide interparcell access to the corners. All right, I'm open to any kind of...
Thank you. We'll bring this up later in the meeting after the work session. Thank you very much. There's still three and a half minutes, if anyone cares else could come up and speak in favor. in favor. No, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You want to speak in favor of the developer, please?
There's a book and, uh, I own the property there between, uh, Claremont Road, just across there, and, uh, this, I'm also working under that, uh, area. Apparently, the, the property that we are talking about is, uh, I saw, there's lots of, a couple of housing, house units that are completely in, uh, disrepair with, uh, four-figure windows, and, uh, that invites, uh, you know, organic activity there. So I look for my development in this property. The other thing is that in this area, there is absolutely no restaurant or businesses that are located there, so this will provide, uh, a restaurant. Also, the meeting space, there's absolutely no meeting, no large meeting space, so I'm hoping that this, this sort of has to go like that also. So that's my.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Still another minute and a half, anyone else who wants, going twice? All right, anyone wishing to come up and speak in opposition to the developer? Very good, so we have one more item on our public hearing for, uh, this evening, which is PZ 20581, which is forty-nine seventy-eight Beeford Highway, variances and waivers for Foga Tony Tony. That's fun to say. Foga Tony Tony. All right, take it away, Matt.
May I believe that's Fug?
Ah, can I still call it Fug? It's like the fake, the fake Georgia Tony Tony.
I'll go with whatever you say.
Cause I said so, dig it. All right, let's have it.
All right, so yes, this is a request for variances and waivers. Uh, it's about a half acre site, and it's an existing building, you saw this recently, came in for a DCI. It's not a DCI this time, it's just a smaller building, so it doesn't trigger DCI, um, and they are, at this point, requesting to redevelop the existing restaurant, building into a restaurant. Several variances, this is an existing site, so, um, they do trigger compliance with the full UDO, so there are several variances and waivers required, um, including an impervious surface and open space requests, um, to make some changes to the landscape, streetscape in the front, to allow the building facade to remain at twenty-one feet when it's required to be twenty-four, and the floor and ceiling height to be seventeen and a half, which it is currently, instead of the required eighteen. They're requesting to reduce the parking spaces down to thirty, um, to, uh, maintain a parking lot in between the building and the street, to place a new dumpster, which would be closer than five feet to the property line. And then the last two are related to signage, there are two existing pole signs that they would like to maintain, and then they are asking for additional wall signage beyond what is permitted. Uh, the waivers are, uh, related to mostly the landscaping, the first three, to parking lot landscaping. They do also want to allow the driveway to remain between the building and the street, and then to not provide interparcial access. Again, this is a redevelopment, it does go over the seventy percent threshold, so there are required to bring the site to full compliance with the UDO. The building is broken up into several different spaces. The kitchen's about twenty-four hundred square feet, which the applicant says, uh, a good deal of that will be used for catering business. Uh, and the restaurant itself is twenty-two hundred square feet with a twenty-five hundred square foot rooftop, car, floor, and patio, um, and then a small patio in the back of the site also. Um, they are going to do new hard coat, hard coat spec, exterior finishes, and they're adding a lot of windows to meet the demonstration requirements of the city. Um, the parking lot, if you're familiar with it now, is completely asphalt, there's no grass, um, they, while they're not meeting the landscape requirements, they are coming in and adding some landscape outlines as best as they can, whilst they'll preserve enough part of our business. Um, and then like I mentioned before, they do want to maintain the pole sign, the pole signs on the property. The streetscapes are, uh, opposing it, it's all the ten-foot wide sidewalk and landscape strips, and there needs to be a little bit more on DDoD to give the lights and the trees between the sidewalk and the street, so that's the, that's the request for the variance. Um, here's the site, uh, south of Food Terminal, Farmer's Market property. Here's the proposed site plan, again, maintaining the existing footprint of the building, um, and adding a rooftop patio, patio renovation, redoing the parking lot in the front. There are four-sided elevations here, here, the first one, the purple, that's the front elevation of the street, try to see, um, that elevation in the line of green, um, that's the elevation facing the food terminal. Um, and then the right, bottom right, that's the elevation facing the internal driveway between the building and the food terminal, Farmer's Market property, and then the elevation on the left is the back elevation, those are green screens with large rectangular outlines. And then they've had some of the artist's rendering of what the building would look like from the front, and then some inspirational pictures in terms of materials and how it would look. There's some, since they thought it was of the site, you know, the building, and then how the current front and parking lot is configured. Staff does recommend approval on the parking, denial on the park. I mean, you have a recommended condition that the pole signs do come down prior to issuance of the CO. Um, and then, uh, recommend approval of the majority of the variances and waivers, denial of the impervious surface because they can't use impervious paving, uh, we would like them to meet the streetscape requirements. We felt they can meet the building height through some architectural elements, it doesn't have to be actual building height, so we did recommend denial of that, and then denial of the signed variances. And that's it.
Pretty good. Anything else? Okay. All right, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project, please come up to the microphone.
Uh, good evening. My name's Chris Nardone, I'm, uh, the architect, uh, CNA architects, um, 1125 L.A.L. Drive in Roswell. Um, I don't know if you remember this or not, we came through maybe eighteen months ago or so, um, with a little more aggressive project, per se, developing pretty much this whole lot and the lots behind it. The owner and the client, I think, he has the flu, and he may not be here tonight, so I'll be winging it on a couple of, uh, aliens, I wish that he was determined. But I did briefly report, and, um, pretty much, I think we can work with most of the variances that are recommended for denial. Um, I guess I can go through them in the next, in the session or so, but, um, the increase of the landscape strip and the right way, uh, basically request another nine feet of, um, landscaping at the front of the road, and that would affect, and that would affect three parking spaces, so that exasperates and parking variance by parking spaces. Um, I'm pretty sure the client will be pleased to live with that, if that was what would happen. Um, signs on the size of the building, um, if, if I'm prepared to get that out, I also assume that two would suffice, so we can move on from that one. I wanted to clarify one thing, um, the existing ceiling height at, it's six seventeen-six, I think it was the bottom of the roof, and not necessarily the bottom of the bar doors, I think it's really around about fifteen feet to six, clear, currently in the roof. So I just wanted to clarify that. And, yeah, the goal here is to, um, repurpose this building, um, it's been kind of run down for a while, and the tenants aren't necessarily the, the best tenants that people prefer to have. So, um, um, he would be the owner and the operator of the catering kitchen as well as a restaurant. Um, it just opened a restaurant up in the north of us, and it's doing pretty well, so we, now, now come back to this, this property to see if he can put another restaurant there. And the reason he wants the catering kitchen there is that he's hoping to do about five or six more restaurants getting around, and this will be the common denominator for all the restaurants. Um, I don't know what his opinion would be on losing his, um, mind and eye on signs, um, I don't, um, I'll have to resort to him at some point on that, if he wants stuff like those. Um, obviously, there's probably some revenue attached to him or, at least directly attached to him as well. But, um, although I think this would be an improvement over the current site, um, we did, as you can see, add a lot of landscaping, um, like right now, it's pure asshole. We're normally two percent off on the impervious surface, that's a no-brainer, it's just a painting, impervious painting, and they get to that. So I think, and everything is pretty close, um, we had to pay the height of the building to get it to twenty-four feet, that's the amount we should do. Um, and the purpose, I guess I'll go back to the sign on three sides, part of the purpose for the first sign, in his opinion, was because it is engaged to the shopping center, um, that's why he wanted to put the porch, patio on the backside of the building, to start having some interconnected activity and visibility from, to, from those Farmer's Market to his particular, and then he's still in the lots behind it, we would ultimately develop it as well, so he's trying to connect, create that visual interconnected before there's something right there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, thank you for that work session. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? We've got about, uh, six minutes left. Very good. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Very good. Can we move on? Want to make a motion, or anybody object to me? Just, go ahead.
Motion to, uh, exit the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Second. All right. Yeah. So we have a motion, a second to exit the, uh, public hearing. All those in favor? Fascinatingly, all right. So, before I bang the gavel again, this comes to my attention, we have some VIPs from some neighboring cities that had hoped to get here by the swearing in, but with all the traffic problems I'm sure we have in the area, they weren't able to make it. Are they still here?
They left.
They left.
Time's a time boy.
I didn't see them wave. Are you kidding? I'm busy running a meeting. So there were some people here from Rock Haven and Door Mill, but they left, so we don't like them anymore. There's enough cameras in here without hearing me say that. All right. So we will call to order then, and just, they send me a text and ask that they could come up and say congratulations, so we do have a great relationship with all of our surrounding cities, and we love that. All right, so I have called to order then, the city council work session for January sixteen, twenty twenty. Uh, announcements, presentations, I don't believe we have any. Staff action items, we have city clerk approval of minutes, we have the city council public hearing work session for December twelfth. We have the city council meeting minutes from the regular meeting in December seventeenth. Beeler, Beeler, Beeler. Everybody's good? Good job, Emmy. Oh my gosh, I remember when it was so great. Not under Emmy. No, not under Emmy. Emmy's done a great job. No, I wasn't referring to you. All right, uh, I've been at this a while. So the second item underneath, uh, city clerk is the twenty-twenty general administrative annual appointments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If it pleases you, I'd like to try to handle items two through six as a group. Um, these are the annual appointments that are before you, um, most of which we've gotten information on, but there are a handful that need some assistance. Um, outside of your, uh, general appointments, um, the design review board needs three, uh, appointees to serve a two-year term, this changed last year. The recreational advisory, uh, committee is completely slated, I believe, um, she may be missing one. Um, the CAD advisory committee is, I believe, complete, and that should cover all of the appointments under the city clerk.
Very good discussion on this item.
I just want to say my two ethics appointments are here tonight, so.
Well, how about that?
Yeah, I'd like to add that I apologize for not getting you mine in time for the agenda to be published by the email to sub the others.
Thank you.
And I, I am a miss as well, I, I have one, and I have a request into that individual, and I hope to hear from him soon. My two, my Tuesday.
Yeah, that would be good. All right, anything else on this? Very good, all right. Um, next item then is the ethics committee appointment, the design review board, we just went over all of those, that's what you said, two through seven.
Mayor Clarkson, I apologize, I do have one more item under city clerk, number seven.
Number seven, client services manager. See, I tried to just run through all of them, but, okay, all right, well, if you insist, and it's on the agenda. Go right ahead.
If I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, we can go, if I can.
Um, no, over the past seven years, um, the city's continued to grow, um, it's been an exciting journey, um, since I've been here, and recently, we had, um, one of our administrative assistants, uh, in the city clerk's office retire after twenty years of service. Um, she is here this evening, so if you'd like to congratulate her, please do that. She is already truly missed, um, at the front. Um, but with that, uh, the city manager has always encouraged the staff to evaluate our departments whenever we have somebody, uh, leave, and evaluate, and make sure that we're being the most efficient, and with that being said, I've asked to change this position from an administrative assistant, while Marcy, that was her title, she was so much more, um, because of the history that she had with the city. Um, so I'd like to, um, and the title can change, I threw out client services manager, I'm not tied to it or in love with it, um, but this person will be responsible for the day-to-day issuance of alcohol licenses, massage and spa licenses, in addition to open records requests and record retention. Um, they'll serve as a backup to the city clerk for certification of documents and occupation and ta, or the, and the occupation and licensing officer during the renewal season, the lunch hour, and while on vacation. Um, this person will assist the city clerk in the administration of alcohol hearings and various other tasks, including the agendas and minutes. My desire would be to have that person attend this meeting once a quarter, um, and do the agenda and the minutes for those meetings they attend, so that, um, we have some backup in this department.
Very good. Any discussion on this item? You throw a title out there, man, you gotta be, you're married to it, you're behind it, like, you believe in it. Come on, Emmy, we're gonna work on that for you, all right? Very good. Marcy, thank you very much, I didn't see where Marcy is. There she is. She's hiding behind John, right? Marcy's been awesome, I think she's been here like, as long, or almost as long as I have, right?
Been here twenty.
Twenty, you got me beat.
Been here twenty-one and eighteen, so.
All right, well, if I stick around a little longer, I might be able to be sure of it. All right, so we move on to the city manager, as much as we don't want to, we will. Uh, first item is animal safety ordinance.
Thank you, as a request of council, we have reviewed our current ordinances to protect animals in the city. Um, so we did some research on this, and, um, one of the items that, uh, we looked at was animals being left in vehicles, um, intended in vehicles. Um, we looked at what other cities have done for this, and the recommendation is that we, and then they worked to allow, um, animal patrol officers or law enforcement personnel to be able to, to damage a vehicle when they are in fact rescuing people or pets, uh, but in this case, animal officers or pets.
So like what, fashion, the headlights, or?
Yes. Preferably the, uh, the window, uh, to, 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 to. Um, so this, uh, ordinance would relate to, actually adds, um, the section, uh, BD to this, uh, code section, essentially says the animal patrol officer of the city police department authorized use of equal force, including breaking the window, uh, to remove an animal, uh, when it appears that it handles itself for safety.
Is that it? Darren, go ahead, but.
I just want to thank you all for working on this, I have something that many of our officers hold near and dear to their cards, something that's, um, a little to nature of the public, and something that's important to me as well, so I really appreciate you taking the time to work on this ordinance and, uh, put it across.
Good deal. All right. I'll be sure, I'll be sure not to lock my dog in my car, cause I like my headlights. All right. Next item, city manager, termination of Cronos contract.
Mayor Clarkson, would that, would it be the desire of the council to make that to a grocery courtesy?
Oh, my gosh, yeah, I guess so. And that was such a perfect page, right? There was nothing on that page, and now you just soiled it.
I'm admitting.
You soiled it, this page. It will never be the same. Yes, we should, thank you very much, Emmy, for pointing that out. Back to you, John.
Um, termin, hello? Termination of the Cronos contract, uh, we're asking here, uh, for authorization, uh, to terminate a contract that we have with Cronos, uh, timekeeping and, and HR and payroll. Uh, last year, staff recommended, and you did approve us moving to Cronos for HR, uh, and payroll software. Um, that has not worked out very well. Um, in fact, uh, we've had multiple issues, in the most recent, uh, pay period, uh, we had several issues with actually getting the checks, uh, out. Part of this stems from, uh, the fact that, uh, that implementing.
Part of this stems from the fact that implementation by Cronos would actually outsource to a third party, resulting in incomplete implementation and poor customer service. So we have been reviewing other resources for this, and I believe, Kristen, have you done a matrix of those other sources, resources?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we have. We collected proposals from three different vendors. We've considered several different options based on our experience with Cronos, what we believe will better suit our needs for employees. We have decided to recommend Paycom to replace Cronos, and we believe that their customer support, and along with some onsite implementation training, the things that can really set the system correctly, as well as ongoing support of my systems and women, who will be of better service to the city, and will address many of these issues that we have with Cronos.
I would just like to add that we did notify our members of our displeasure and our concerns with the system implementation. We have given time per the contract, responded, provided a fix, and have not received a sufficient response.
Very good. So Tuesday, Emmy, the clerk, are you looking for the council to just authorize the termination of the contract, or do you also?
Also authorize the new contract for Paycom.
Okay. Any other questions? Very good. Before we move on, I'd just like to point out, you're an air cat, looks really good job. You probably want to carry your ID around if you look about thirty years younger. Very good. I can say that, 'cause HR did not hear. All right, development department, so now we get to talk about some other things. PZ two oh one nine five four six, which is fifty-two ninety-five New Peachtree Road, which is the Pentecostal church that I can't pronounce. So this has been, was deferred for, from last month, month before?
I believe it was deferred from November.
Okay, and where are we now?
So there was some concerns about the architecture, the applicant went back, and at the very end of your packet, there are two options. I believe they brought a board, you're interested in speaking to them, but they are in your packet, and they showed kind of the softening of the materials for the addition to blend better with the existing building. There's an option that it's not, they're not trans, they're not opaque windows or translucent, so it's frosted glass, and one version has kind of a thinner version of that glass, and there's another that has a larger version, which would give the appearance of larger windows. I'll thank you, John. So they have submitted that, and they are proposing now to repaint the front and the side, add some signage on the front, do some landscaping to make improvements to the overall of the settlement.
I understand that they have, they have had some materials that they have presented to show us, they're mostly the renders are in line with what was already previously submitted correct.
Is that what we're looking at here? They've come on the microphone, please.
Send me up to sixty-five Market Road, City Council, like to repaint, you could have one for each.
That's fine. One for the clerk, please. We can share if we need to.
So what we did, we went back and reviewed the list of comments, the several things that have come up. One is that the district has agreed that we should go back in pressure washers, we've got to repaint the entire church, we added additional signage, that we did soften up the addition to the church, which is the, since the social fellowship hall, there is a connector. We have maintained the tech metal panels on this facility, we get them in vertical orientation, so very similar to the concrete panels that currently don't exist in church building. The original landscape land, it was part of the original one, the middle, so that was prepared on landscape architect. We've met the requirements for the street furniture, for the sidewalk areas that were required, and for the landscaping. The one thing that I think that we have had, that we have discussed, that we've sent information to the planning department, is the sustainability items, and we feel that even though we asked a very technical way, but we feel that we can lead to a very sustainable sustainability items. So with that being said, we did, we had a professional rendering prepared, so you could see the layout of this could look like. We did go up and down the street to see what was in place for the rest of the area, so what's there now, is it retail, or I guess light storage buildings, entertainment restaurants? It's kind of hard for us to match it there, because it's such a large, much larger structure. We were very, very hesitant to do anything that would put any other kind of adornment to say on this church, since it's been there probably fifty, sixty years. So we thought we would update it, upgrade it, and then try to make a fellowship hall matching as well as possible of the existing church.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Great, thanks. Any questions?
I do have one. So the area in the proposed construction, is that in this, or is that architectural metal panels?
Could you come on back to the microphone, sir, so everybody can hear you, please?
The intent was to do all metal panels, so it would be a metal station, and to make sure that it's clear, this is architectural metal panels, so it's not metal siding, it's not wood, it's not anything like, you know, it's architectural metal panels.
I honestly, I appreciate, personally, I appreciate you going back to the drawing board and going back with some of the ones, a little bit more on the board.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, appreciate you being here. All right, next item, we have, we just did the public hearing on this this evening, which is forty eleven, forty-one, forty-seven Champa River Road rezoning. That's the Bright Park Council. Any questions to the council?
I have one question.
For who?
The public.
All right. If you would please come on back up to the microphone.
On page eighteen of this paper here, it doesn't show the trail connecting to anything, like, to be accessed by the public office, so it kind of shows one end dumping off into the woods, and specifically this pop in right here.
Right.
And I was wondering how the people on this sidewalk are going to get to this trail.
Yeah, we were talking about the best place to connect, is to go down toward the church flats off, there's like a glassy grass area before it goes down to the creek, and so we're showing like a little mulch trail trails down from our development that gets down to it. But we were, we were actually, we're open to anything, looping it back up to the twelve-foot trail, or we did not, our understanding, we thought on the map, this came from just the map, was that the intent was to kind of take it through that grass area along that creek at the church, and so that's why our mulch from our development was going to go down and connect to it, but we're totally open whether it needs to loop up to the twelve-foot trail for now, or do something a little bit different. We were just, we weren't exactly sure how, how to best leave that based on the map.
I don't think, I don't think that's where to connect to the church property, since there's a creek there, there's no way to get across the creek, unless I'm missing something.
No.
So I think if it was to be a bridge, I think we would have to connect to the sign that function, I think that would be good.
We can, with the, since we're proposing to construct a crusher run trail, and we would, we can just loop it to the right end of that trail.
Sure. That's it, all I have.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, very good, thank you very much, we're gonna move on. The next item then, still in the development department, was deferred for two months, that's the Chick-fil-A. The next item is also heard this evening, which was various addresses, Claremont Road, the DCI, the Hilton Garden Inn, council, any questions? Very good, move right along, takes a better site plan, my opinion doesn't matter.
Hold on one second.
Sorry, I've already moved on, I've already crossed it off. No, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Can I just, I wanted to know, yeah, interparcial connectivity issues on there, so you can back. So you mentioned, I guess in that upper corner there, that there was a possibility of doing interparcial connection. A lot of times these projects, they don't actually install the interparcial connection, they just do an easement or show where it might be. I was just wondering why you couldn't do that to the adjacent property, just in case.
We can, that's what I'm saying, the variance effect is worth for the southern side, we can show the other.
I don't know, but I'd still like to have an easement there, just in case, you never know.
Sure.
Yeah, we can.
Hotel, hotel.
Because there's a gas pump there, so the gas pumps are gone. Yeah, we're not opposed to, there's a twenty-foot wall on that one side, so that's why we have to.
But we don't know what's going to be tomorrow.
Sure. You can show it. Okay.
All right, very good. So I understand that the proposed parking lot running Claremont is below grade. Is there any proposed plans giving you a terrace or something, a wall or?
Yes, there's going to be like three levels of terrace, that'll all be in there, at the top, there's a supplemental road, which will have street trees and lighting and all that up there. Well, the fence will also protect all sections from, obviously going down.
Very good, thanks.
Before you run away.
See what jumped up, yeah.
It looks like what you're showing in the front of elevation, John, could you pull that up, please, on the Claremont Road? Are these brick patio-type things alongside the sidewalk on Claremont Road, the brown and red?
Yeah, there's going to be some sort of, some sort of paper, you know, material, some sort of decorative, that would actually building. So we got the greens base, it's going to be the grass, you got the concrete sidewalk, and then the supplemental road will be made up with paper and little decorative walls in order to, with a decorative, you know, kind of a metal fence.
And you're going to have benches there?
What's that?
There's going to be benches?
Yeah, so then, yeah, that'll be, as far as, yeah, the whole, the whole supplemental road is allowed, all the streets, these different things, making it look a bit desertier, but there's air.
Awesome. Anyone else? Anyone else? Good. Thank you, appreciate you being here. All right, all right, and I like that, it's not going to be a twenty-foot wall, man, like Duke's at Harvard, you can see somebody just really getting after it, right? Go find a general idiot, jump it, evil can evil. Let me look around the audience, yeah, most people know what I'm talking about. All right, forty-nine seventy-eight P for Highway, various waivers, which apparently I pronounced it wrong, but I still like, oh god, Tony Tony, because I think that sounds fun, so. Any questions?
I have a question. If the elevations, I'm not seeing any outdoor dining on the backside of that, it's just not being shown, I think. I'd like a picture of it, if I could have.
It's on there, it's going to be there eventually.
Yeah, but you're not talking about rooftop part?
No, no, no. It's the lower, it's the left-hand side, it has a railing, it's the one, the bottom left-hand corner, it's got railing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so just half of the back of the building.
Oh, that's pretty sad.
Because that's the restaurant side itself, to the right of the stair tower, it's got the living, trellises.
Yeah.
It's a commissary side, so that's why the living dock and the dumpster are the commissaries.
So the driveway that accesses, that goes between this building and the food court building, is that mostly on Miller property?
No, that's the city street.
Oh, that is a city street.
Right, and the challenge there, or the opportunity, is that the building is literally one inch off of that property line.
Yeah.
It's got a little bit of angle, but it goes to like one inch of that eight inches.
Right, so you could have your parking access from that room as opposed to having a curb cut on Duford Highway.
And we do have, we do show access from over there.
But you have that curb cut on Duford Highway as well?
Yeah, so I don't think you wanted to give that one up.
A lot of curb cuts there. Okay.
John?
Same question on the interpersonal connectivity. I think you requested some, that based on the current conditions, but, you know, a lot of times we still would like to have that easement, so should those conditions change, we have those interparcial connections available for future redevelopment?
I don't know if he's gotten any response from Enterprise or not, we are showing it at the front of the property, which is really about the only place it could be for future development.
Right.
And then the rear, the rear of the inside, I know that's correctly his property, but it may not be his property forever. Right, and the rear is kind of the interparcial access to, between this one, its other properties behind the alley, and the alley is an access he's supposed to get to the backup enterprise and the repair shop.
Right, if those events aren't shown in place, then sometimes they can, sometimes they have a way in, not working out, so. I was just asking a quick question.
Other questions? Very good, thank you very much, appreciate you being here. All right, and we have one more under the development department, we have ARC's Regional Connected Vehicle Program funding resolution. I'm sure that there is an acronym in there somewhere.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request for the mayor to, council to authorize the mayor to sign a resolution to support the city's application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for ARC's Connected Program application. This is a new program with ARC, we would like to submit all the signalized intersections on Peachtree Boulevard. The program is a data exchange program with primary traffic sensors and detection technologies. The, once implemented, the idea is that they can be programmed to prioritize for emergency vehicles or transit during peak hours. There's also the thought of designing freight quarters to where you can communicate to make sure large trucks aren't stopping and starting so much on this road, so traffic flows better. The program is, like I said, funded through ARC, we're eligible for up to ten thousand dollars per intersection with a two thousand dollar budget. So if we got all twelve intersections, that would be up to twenty-four thousand dollars.
Good deal. Any questions? I think that's awesome, thank you. And the acronym would be R-C-B-P-F-R, just really nothing, seriously, I'm not, I'm disappointed in my friends at the ARC not making an acronym out of that. Police Department, she's not even here to get a big star. Oh my gosh. We got, I mean, Lieutenant Harris retired, he didn't even come see us, right? I had to see it on Facebook, very disappointing. Parks Recreation, they're not here either. All right, well, they don't get stars. F for Finance, for all of you fans out there in Sesame Street. The first thing under the F for Finance is Comcast violation resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, we did hold a public hearing on this matter, essentially the background after the two twenty, two thousand, two thousand and fifteen intersection, Comcast had failed to recode that annexed area into the city, so we did not receive the franchise experience for a period of time. So at this point, we have been having negotiations with Comcast, but are at an impasse, so at this time, we are asking the council to adopt a resolution finding Comcast violation of the franchise for failure of employment, and to pursue our justice.
Very good, any discussion on this item?
What does that do?
What does that do? By passing this resolution, we should then be able to essentially draw a legal favor.
Very good, now it's just a, it's a res, it doesn't need to read or anything. I don't believe so, right? Doesn't need to be read, okay. Very good, still under F for Finance, we have the twenty twenty budget amendment resolution. We got lots of resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have changed this slightly, and I do have that.
Sorry, no budget resolution. No soup for you.
Look, I got to.
For anyone in the council, you're already stealing my stuff.
Wow. This is, these titles are special. This is a house key, item four, two items.
We do have a sinking fund for debt payment that are to pay for bond, but the URA bond has. And so what this does is rather than have a transfer of the, if you remember in the budget, we talked about we had transfers for different fines into the general fine line and going up to the sinking fine line. We cleaned that up a little bit, so that those transfers come directly from Motel Motel and the other rental motor vehicle, as well as general direct into the sinking fine account. The second thing this does is that we did is an oversight. We do have twenty nineteen, seven size funds for the design, Police Department, and property. We did not carry over the balance so that they continue working, so we are carrying over that balance to twenty twenty.
Very good. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Should we get to move on then from Finance and go to G for Garbage? No, Public Works. One, we have the General Consulting Services Agreement. Oh yeah, no, no microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll be presenting in place of the Public Works Director until he arrives.
Are you, are you just presenting in place of, or?
Yes.
So this is just the highlights for the General Consulting Services Agreement. We're currently using Thomas Head's Engineering Firm for various Public Works ads, primarily for infrastructure and store related projects. We would like to go into, excuse me, allow us to go into agreement with Thomas Head to allow us to establish a set rate for this service. We have used Thomas Head for a work order pass there. Location is convenient, they recently opened an office not too far from City Hall, so relationship is new great, we would like to go into an agreement. Disagreement does not bind to us, this is a non-agreement agreement, and we can strike right really another engineering firm if necessary.
Any questions? No, all right, very good. Thank you. One more or two more. We got General Service Agreement for Traffic Safety Making Goods.
Another General Service Agreement, this is for some built up traffic incorporated, currently used as organization for traffic red papers. Again, they provide a great service, an ownership of our free. We would like to renew the agreement that has lapsed, primarily to lock in the rates to make sure that we see large services shifting, considering that our neighboring cities have agreed to some of the also.
Any discussion? All right, two for two. Three for three, you got to work and assessment management enhancement software.
Mr. Mayor, this is software based in relation to capture activity. Software assists us in improving communication with citizens and our staff on a contract. We also need to record performance data. It will also assist us with collecting data that we need for the application of grants. We're currently using IWorks for about a year now. We discovered, discovered a few glitches with the solitewares, we're having difficulty to get invented to respond, and turn around. We would like to terminate this agreement and move with IWorks. I wouldn't be Pub Works. Pub Works came in substantially cheating, Pub Works to help, Pub Works against two other software providers, and came in substantially helping with all of the services or software and other software programs. We use the budget, the twenty twenty, twenty budget to cover costs and software, so no additional work is necessary.
Any discussion on this item? We do that three for three. Thank you, Mr. Public Works, I mean, Mr. Deputy City Manager. Doing a great job. All right, H for Economic Development. We have number one, Wayfinding Funding.
Yes, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city's wayfinding program requires some updating and expanding, so the city manager and I, a couple weeks ago, we met with Todd Spot, who was the designer of the original wayfinding system that we have, just to discuss what he could do to update it on a very limited budget, and to see what fifty thousand dollars would cover if it would come from the Renaissance Fund. The, and so this is kind of a two parter. It's giving approval to get money from the Renaissance Fund and then also approving the contract with Confluence Design, which is Todd's business. And he would basically do a design package that would include new designs for gateway signs and wayfinding signs that complement the existing signs program for the city as well as unique features for Duffer Highway sign. The scope of services are all in the packet attached packet, and the financial breakdown is below, so basically his little lesson package that will go to the design services, we'll be able to use that in the future, once we have more money to actually build out some more signs as well. And then we'll have about thirty thousand dollars here remaining to build out a lot of signs.
So earlier this year in the first quarter, we were talking about the urban trails and the signage and wayfinding there. Is that something that we could roll out concurrently with this? I know it's a little bit different.
Yeah, it's worth talking about. You know, we're not going to do a big public engagement session, but just one of you and Council and other staff.
That's a good place, that'd be a great start if someone was on the ground.
Anyone else? All right, very cool, I like that topic, you did a good job. All right, still under development department, we have the URA appointments.
Yes, Mayor, Council, all you have to do is update who is the chair and vice chair of the Urban Development Agency. You don't have to reappoint the board if you all, if it's transferred into a position. So the only thing you have to do is, is the chair and the vice chair.
Very cool. So I guess we can think about that. All right, we have that's a beautiful page right there, telling you what gold stars for everybody. Boards, authorities, and faiths, I don't believe we have any. I'm sure everybody's probably board by now. City Attorney, we will have one first read on Tuesday evening, no secondary, Mayor and Council items. I would like to point out that Councilwoman Lufkin got her first big gold star for not having anything on it.
Different time.
The best government as a government. All right, so everybody's favorite number seven, it used to be number nine. Go along your number nine, or man, a long time ago, number nine, and I can go with number nine. But it's not, it's number seven, but it is a crowd favorite. You'll have three minutes to say what's on your mind, please give your name and address to city clerk. I know a lot of us are new here, we've had some challenges with that one recently. Please remember that you need to keep your comments respectful and not calling out any individual, any individual period. So, here we go. Going once. Going twice. There you go, come on up. That's sure? You know?
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you here. Charlie and Robert, seven hundred and two six five twenty five circle. Welcome to my new city council. We recently just did a speed table, and they were recently installed, and let's just say they were not what we were expecting. They were not all, they're not, they're not what we were looking for on the future, and they're not even like the descriptions that we were told. We were told tables, and several of the neighbors are calling them blocks. And they're not even slowing the people down. And even the contractors were making comments that they were just about running the contractors over while they were installing them. So even the contractors want to say that on that road. So I was asked to basically bring what we were told, and some of the city councils already gone and driven the street, so y'all know what it is. But we basically are looking for the new, I know that this might be one of the first projects, because I think y'all took the labor work away from the cap down, and now the city is doing it. So I'm not sure if we're maybe the first for once, but we're not, we're not happy. We'd like to rectify it, we'd like to work with the city to rectify it. And I have what we talked about, and I can give them to you, and I also brought back the, the city's figures, or when we, when we did the issue, at least my city figures from my side. And I'll be happy to work, so after the meeting, to give them to you. But I just wanted to write it on the record that Whiteville Falls is not happening, and we'd like to work with the city to rectify it. East of Wiggins has been very harmful, and I'm sure that we can rectify it.
Great, thank you very much. You want to give those to city clerks, or you are, give them down, let's find out if you can. The deputy city public works manager. Anyone else? Anyone else? Three minutes. Okay. I believe we have an executive session this evening, so how that works, we're going to have an executive session, we'll have to ask you all to be in the room. We will then make any votes, we can't vote in executive session, we will then reopen the meeting and invite you all back in before anything, anything may need to be voted on this talk, etc., we got to vote it on in open, and then we will close the court session. So if someone cared to take it as an executive session.
Motion to go into executive session for a real estate personnel.
And real estate, I mean, real estate legal.
And legal.
Not matters, okay, very good. All those in favor? We have, we have motion to executive to go into, or wait a second?
I'm saying.
Second. Motion to executive to go into executive session to discuss real estate legal and personnel issues. All those in favor? I'm passionate, I was late.
All right, then, by consent, I will, I'll adjourn. That's it. I'm waiting.